Welcome to this meeting of the City of Santa Barbara's City Council Sustainability Council Committee. It's today is October 19th, 2020. Can we have a roll call vote? Ms. Parento, are you acting as our clerk today?
I'll be acting as the clerk. Brendan Moan. I do want to point out that there was an error on the original posted agenda. It had council member Friedman instead of council member Harmon. So that has been updated in multiple areas and that will all be sorted out by the end of the day in terms of the correct agenda is posted. I have, I'll do, I'll go ahead and do roll call now. We have Chair Maria.
Here.
Councilmember Sten.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Um, we're going to ask for public comment for items that are not on this official agenda, but are within the jurisdiction and subject matter of the topic of sustainability. Mr. Clerk, is anyone out there asking to speak?
Yes, it looks like Timothy Mahoney. I'm seeing that he is looking like he's ready to speak. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute you and you should be able to speak for.
Three minutes?
Yes, it's three minutes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the committee appreciate your efforts in sustainability. I just wanted to bring out, talk about some new technology that's coming up that SoCal Gas is getting into. We're now looking at hydrogen as a fuel which we can put in our many pipelines that of course are running to the businesses and the homes in Santa Barbara and all out through Southern California. We recognize hydrogen and hydrogen fuel cells are going to play a critical part in the future, the clean energy future of California. So as we work forward on clean energy, hydrogen and the fuel cells, this can be without combustion as the beauty of hydrogen. Like if you put a vehicle, an all-electric fuel cell vehicle powered by hydrogen, the only emission is water. There's no combustion per se on that. So we at SoCal Gas, we're looking at developing these carbon-free and carbon-neutral gases like the renewable natural gas and hydrogen. So of course, you know that the renewable natural gas from some, comes from wastewater plants, sewer plants, dumps, agricultural arenas, things of this nature that are produced organically from the human waste stream. If you're not capturing that renewable natural gas, it simply goes into the, into the atmosphere, creating greenhouse gases. So that's a good thing to recapture that gas. And then hydrogen is coming up as really a very powerful tool in the future. And we can provide with the hydrogen, once you put that into the, into the pipeline system, you can use that for long-term storage of renewable power. You can take that and produce electrical generation. And then the other good thing about that is your fuel cells and these alternatives can be used as backup electricity during any type, because of the storage capabilities during any type of public purpose shut offs or things of that nature. And of course, this last couple of weeks here, we had a couple of very, very hot days and there were public purpose shut offs and electricity was curtailed in some places. So having a multitude of energy sources, a balanced energy portfolio just seems like a really good thing for the city and the rest of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Any other speakers for open public comment?
I'm just checking right now. It looks like we do have a few people. I want to remind you to click the hand icon to raise your hand if you would like to speak during public comment. I see we have Jonathan Allman has his hand raised. So I'll go ahead and I've unmuted you now. You are currently self-muted. We should be able to hear you now.
Hi, my name is Jonathan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Jonathan Allman. I'm the Director of the Los Padres Chapter of the Sierra Club based in Santa Barbara. I want to thank the Council and the Sustainability Committee for all of their support over the years. Santa Barbara is truly on the edge of, of cutting edge. They're on the cutting edge of economic and environmental sustainability. As part of that, building electrification is essential. Today, the Los Angeles Times editorial page endorses building electrification. And last week, the City of Ojai asked its staff to prepare a reach code, an all-electric reach code, no gas at all for new buildings. City of Santa Barbara had one that it was about to release in April to this committee. It has been delayed because of COVID. However, the people of Santa Barbara support this and I think it's time for it to come in front of this committee and the council. Do not be intimidated by SoCal Gas. They have used certain techniques in City of San Luis Obispo and other places to try to make sure that their market share is preserved. But this is not about their market share. This is about the health and safety of the residents of City of Santa Barbara. And I would urge you to, to take action to make sure that we are safe, not only for our health, but for the climate, which is ever encroaching upon our, our humanity and our wildlife, and we have to take action.
Thank you, Mr. Allman. Anyone else like to speak? Raise your hand in the go-to webinar function, please.
Yes, we have Katie Davis. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you now. If you could go ahead and unmute yourself and then we should be able to hear you.
Hi, this is Katie Davis, Chair of the Santa Barbara Sierra Club. And I'll be brief. I'm sending email as well. I just wanted to reiterate the point about bringing forward a building electrification code soon. And now is really a good time to move on that. And Santa Barbara was really at the lead. I mean, we were really at the forefront of this over a year ago. In our strategic energy plan, we said that we plan to implement one of these reach codes. And in fact, even dating back to 2012 and the Climate Action Plan, which Santa Barbara was really ahead on, it, it called for a reach code. So we haven't gotten to it yet. And it's a little frustrating watching, you know, 35 other cities move forward and do it. You know, being part of that wave, that environmental wave of cities that are saying we need to obviously stop building new fossil fuel infrastructure if we're ever going to make this transition and meet the carbon neutrality goals that we recently set. You know, that's just an obvious first step, but we need to, we need to actually act on it. So I would just encourage you to ask staff to bring it forward so the city council can vote on it. It's, it's pretty amazing to watch cities just do this so quickly. Like Ojai just jumped on it and passed something. So just encouraging it to push that forward. Again, renewable natural gas might be good for some situations, but if there's not enough of it, it could only supply maybe 4% of the natural gas we use. So that the key is to get off of it. That would also be more expensive than just electrification, which is very cost efficient. You have very efficient electric appliances now. Mostly you couldn't use, if your electricity isn't on, you couldn't use your natural gas appliances either because they, they have electric ignition switches for the most part. So that it's not like we need a balance. And it's, it's so much healthier. Look up an article in The Atlantic this month that's called Kill Your Gas Stove. I recently read that and it really made me want to replace my gas stove because of the, the, the gas. And it's particularly a problem for, for apartments and poorer people who don't have good ventilation in their houses. So that's just an interesting thing to read about how they help benefits and the, and the economic benefits of getting off of gas in addition to, in addition to helping to meet our carbon goals. So just want to highlight that again. Thank you so much for all your leadership, getting ahead of this and the, the carbon neutral goal that Santa Barbara set recently. Thanks so much. Bye.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I'm checking right now. Yes, we have Paul Poirier. Poirier, gone ahead and unmuted you. If you could unmute yourself.
Howdy. I'll keep it short today. And last week, there was a big hearing at the Building Standards Commission and I was hoping to attend to speak on behalf of AIA California to support a electrification code. But after that meeting, which I didn't attend, some other compatriots of mine went there to go talk. They showed me the letter that you sent, Kathy, to the Building Standards Commission that supported an electrification code and said Santa Barbara was really moving towards a new sustainable future. So I just wanted to thank you for reaching beyond the boundaries of our city to help move this forward. And I have let Aleleia know that the local architects from the American Institute of Architects, statewide and at the local chapter, are here to help you actualize this and make it happen for our community. So thank you very much for your leadership locally as well as statewide. It's awesome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I believe that is all. I'm just checking again at the moment. And it looks like that is all for now. Yes.
We'll close open public comment and move on to our first agendaized item, introduction of the new Sustainability and Resilience Department website. And we have a PowerPoint, I think.
So for this, Bree is going to, Ms. Winkler is going to take over the screen sharing at this moment and she's going to show us the website, after which we will have a PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Bree. Good afternoon, Mayor Maria, Councilmember Sten and Councilmember Harmon. My name is Brian Latchford. I'm from our Environmental Services Division and I'm handling the public outreach for our brand new Sustainability and Resilience Department. Also here with Bree Winkler, who's managing our screen share right now. And she'll talk a little bit about our website in a bit. She's in our Energy and Climate Division. So we're going to walk through the brand new website. But first I did want to briefly talk about the citywide sustainability communications planning because there was a lot of discussion before this website was created. We wanted to create a microsite that would replace the city's current sustainability page, which provides information and links to different projects across the city while clearly defining what divisions this new department is made of. So Bree will cover these pages in more in-depth, but if, Bree, you could scroll down a little bit. We did want to call out specifically, that's the Energy and Climate Division, Environmental Services. You can see we're now calling ourselves Materials Management there because we are covering a full gamut of materials processing and recovery here in town. But then we do have references to, of course, all the other awesome sustainability projects across the city, water, transportation, urban planning and habitat restoration. So the Environmental Services Division or City Trash Recycling, as we've called it, has had a pretty robust presence on social media. And so the other aspect besides the website is also how are we going to be communicating with the public? And a lot of that will be through our traditional channels, but also through our social media channels. And so over the last five years, we've, Environmental Services has had a really great and robust social media presence. And it made sense to kind of rebrand our recycling channels into a general sustainability resource. From a public communications perspective, it just made sense. Instead of breaking these down into different channels by discrete topics, to have a single new platform alongside our website, you know, this, these social media channels would be a one-stop shop for sustainability information. And so we have our Facebook page. We have Twitter profile as well. And we have an Instagram page and you can see our handy new little bright logo there. So some new branding and graphic design happening as well. So by rebranding these pages, it allows us to reach our residents for all of our current recycling cleanup programs, along with energy and climates programs, while providing a place to amplify and share stories and posts from other divisions that are sustainability focused. So we came up with that cute social media tag, sustainably SB, rebranded some of our new graphics. And the idea is to really communicate with the public and start asking them, you know, how do you live sustainably in SB? And that's kind of the, the dialogue that we want to start having. So these social media pages alongside our website, a new sustainability newsletter and other traditional communications like City News and Brief and press releases and normal media sources will allow us to highlight more of the projects citywide and facilitate communications with our residents. And so now I'll hand it off to Bree to kind of dive into this beautiful new website we're launching.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, we are so excited to share with you our new department website. I'm going to walk you through mostly the landing pages, but I encourage you to take a deeper dive into the website after our meeting and we would love any feedback that you have. This, I want to iterate that this is a first iteration of the websites and nuts and bolts and we're going to treat this as a living document. It's going to continue to grow with our department and it's also going to continue to grow with the sustainability efforts across the city. So we really envision this website as a one-stop shop for visitors to learn about our city sustainability efforts, ways that they can get involved, events and programs and various resources that we plan on posting for the community. So as Brian mentioned, right off the bat, we ask the visitor, how do you live sustainably in Santa Barbara? And when the residents click on Share With Us, it goes to, it goes to a web form that they can write to us and really start that engagement process right off the bat. Also, you might notice the beautiful artwork here on the website. It is done by a local artist, Joya Groves. And this main image shows residents, business and the government all working and thriving together. And that is our goal. So if I scroll below, we go right into our commitment for the department and, and that's to support really a sustainable, healthy and safe Santa Barbara for everyone to enjoy. To the right, we have this postcard. And we're calling this our climate map, our sustainability map. And it shares sustainable practices that the community can engage in, like eating local food, storing energy for resilience and, and other, and other fun things that they can do for sustainability. And then it also highlights some of the city facilities like El Estero. We also have the Kater Water Treatment Plant on there and, and other fun kind of Santa Barbara landmarks. And if we flip to the other side, then this is the other side of the postcard and it's really a message from our department to the community about our commitment to, again, providing a sustainable, safe and resilient future for everyone and thanking them for being a part of it because this is a community-wide effort. So below this, as Brian mentioned, we highlight first the department, sorry, the programs that are in our department, Energy, Climate, Materials. And then we have a How Do I section, which is kind of like a fact section. And then below that, because we have so many awesome sustainability efforts throughout the city, we want to highlight the other various departments and programs that are, are part of the action. So we've got Water, Transportation, Urban Planning and Habitat Restoration. Below that, we have our, you're probably familiar with this now, the Sustainability Progress Report Card and this really fun flip book. So it's easy to read, very interactive for the community to kind of see what we've been working on, some of the highlights that the city has been able to really achieve. And then also where we're working, some things that we're working on. And below this, we have our social media icons. So if people want to interact with us in that way, they have that ability and then also they can sign up for updates. So then scroll back up to the top. Now we have it broken down into Energy, Climate, Materials Management. Again, the How Do I section, just going to do a high-level overview. Again, I really encourage you to dive deeper. But when, when we go into our energy section, we are right off the bat, again, showing our commitment to clean and reliable energy for the community with this paragraph here. We have it broken down into sections of energy planning, which includes energy resiliency and, or sorry, reliability and also our strategic energy plan. We have Santa Barbara Clean Energy, which is our Community Choice Energy Organization that will be launched next year. Just to note, this is kind of a landing page for that. Eventually it'll be forwarding to the organization's own page. We have Programs and Incentives, which is a great resource for the community looking for energy efficiency programs, also renewable energy rebates and other incentives that the community can take advantage of. And then we have our energy projects and that's for our city's energy efficiency projects. Really it highlights the amount of energy that we've been able to save, the money that we've been able to save. And I'll show you that in just a minute. So as we scroll lower, we go into some of the highlights from this program, some of our big wins. And so just right off the bat, since 2008, we have been able to save $742,000 annually just from energy efficiency projects alone. So we go into a few other kind of highlights. And then going back right into how we're getting there. And that goes back to the menu that we were talking about where we talked about the strategic energy plan, our Community Choice Energy Programs and Incentives and the projects that we have done as a city. And below this, we have our annual energy report. If you haven't checked this out, make sure you do so. It's really great where we go through some of the highlights of our program, some of the big wins and where we're going in the future. So I want to bring you to, sorry, really quick, just as a resource, this list of programs and incentives that the community can access to help with their energy efficiency and renewable energy efforts, breaks it down for residential, for commercial and also those that own multifamily properties. And it's a great resource for the community. And for our energy projects that we have done as a city, we have a great map to highlight some of our projects. When you click on those, you get a breakdown of what the project was, the year that it was done, the annual savings in energy and dollars. It's pretty cool. Below that infographic, again, highlighting some of those wins. Now going to the climate page. We of course are embarking on updating our climate action plan. So this is going to be a great resource for the community and for also us to engage with the community of, through our outreach strategies and our climate justice initiatives. And here is that climate map that we showed you on the homepage earlier. Again, really fun climate map where people can get some ideas of how they can live sustainably in Santa Barbara. Below that, we have highlights for climate and resiliency kind of efforts in the city. We highlight the sea level rise plan, also some of the wins that we have through waste audits and waste diversion. Below this, we have even more ways for the, for the visitor to engage with us. We have a button here to sign up for email updates and that's mostly for the climate action plan, but that will be ongoing even once the, the plan is instated as we start to implement some of the strategies that we list in there. We also have this button, we want to hear from you now. And this takes us to a community engagement page where we list all of the events and programs that we have set up for the update for the climate action plan. And then lastly, we have become a climate ambassador. We mentioned this to you in our last meeting or one of our previous meetings with our outreach strategies. So we come here, it brings us to our climate justice page. And this is just one of our efforts right now, climate ambassador program, where the visitor can either sign up to be a climate ambassador or they can nominate someone. It's still kind of an early stage. So this is going to continue to change and grow as, as we develop our climate action plan. And so I think next I'm going to send it back over to Brian to cover materials management and the How Do I section.
Any questions from the committee members while we're switching over to a new topic? Sorry, I should show my face. Ms. Harmon, question?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I'm so sorry. We weren't really done with, I know I've been going for a long time, but Brian was going to cover the last two sections of the website. That's okay.
We're happy to wait.
Okay, great, thanks.
So the Materials Management page here is pretty simple for right now. A lot of our current content, we have many, many pages on the Civica website that we currently run. And so those, the intent is to migrate those over to this. But right now, for this microsite, it's really just a high-level overview about some of the sustainability goals that we have for materials-related things, as well as the breakdown of the Resource Center that's being built and will be operational up at the landfill next year and how our trash will be processed. And then some of the, the big level things. So our, our residential resources, our business resources, collection, our clean SB programs, below drop-off facilities, some of the, the, the main icons that people would mostly search out on our, on our website. And so a lot of these do reference back to our, our main pages. And then if we want to go to the, the How Do I? So this is going to be a really handy resource for all of our residents. It's kind of the, the frequently asked questions section. And it is divided by, again, different, so we have buyer different topics. So Energy, Climate, Resilience, again, Materials Management. But we also have a section for just general sustainability questions. It'll cover things like are the green business program for some of our businesses? And, and this will really just be a great resource that will be searchable online when people are trying to find specific information about our sustainability programs. But again, this is a living, breathing document. And so as more questions come in and we have areas that we need to cover and link off to and share resources in town and across the state, really, we're going to add those to this list. So I think that that about covers our, our new and shiny website, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Harmon, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much. This is so cool. I really love what I'm seeing. My only question, and I apologize if I missed it, but is this website going to be translated into Spanish as well? Or is, does the page have the capacity to be translated? Thank you.
So there are accessibility features that are, that are built right in. We will be using the, the translation feature for, well, like kind of what we currently have for our santabarbocca.gov website. But again, there are still issues with how that translates some of our materials in. So that, it's something we've already talked about. We want to get all of our pages translated into Spanish. And but currently they're, they're not available from a hard text perspective. It could be translated page by page using a service like Google Translator. And that's kind of built in for some of our accessibility features. We also have alt text included for images and we're making sure that our, you know, so that our other residents are able to view, you know, all of our pages and using the appropriate technology.
Another question, Ms. Nen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is so exciting, I have to say. And this is, I think, really speaks to the importance of having a whole department of your own that is focused on this and can really package it and communicate it and get outreach. And my question is, when is this live? Is it launched yet? Or when, when do we get to be able to start putting it out there?
Right now. It's sustainability, just sustainability.santabarbarbeca.gov.
Great. This is very exciting and it's beautiful. I love that you used a local artist and it just, it just looks so great and really represents us well. Thank you.
And I, pardon me, I just wanted to add to what Mr. Latchford just said to Councilmember Sneddon's question. We are going to be releasing in the City News and Brief today an announcement about the website. And so the And so the official kickoff, if you will, is this meeting and then with a bigger launch, community-wide today.
I wanted to ask about the climate ambassadors. Do the applicants have to be 18 or older? I have an intern coming on, she's 14, and then I think I'm having another one come on, she's in her twenties. So that one shouldn't be any problem, but a lot of young people are always looking for community service hours. What, do you have an answer now or check in with me later?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Madam Mayor. So we haven't really discussed exactly the age range. I think that that's an amazing opportunity to engage the youth and perhaps having another program similar to this. It might be a bit much to ask a younger person to attend all the meetings that we are requesting. So we'd have to take a closer look at that, but I think that's a really great idea.
And as always, we have a youth council and they love to be engaged in activities. So thank you. Those were it for my questions. Um, I'm wondering if we should take public comment on this item. Were you done with the website presentation? Would this be the time to take public comment?
Yes, yeah, we're done.
Okay. Mr. Moen, are anyone raising their hands to give us some public input on this topic?
At the moment, no. No one's hand is up. Let's see, we just had a comment from Ellen Mosher. I can go ahead and unmute you if you want to just. You've been unmuted, Ellen. You just have to unmute yourself as well. Okay, if I'm, not sure if he's able to unmute, but he says, "Great work. Love the website. I'd love to see a frequently asked question and link on 'How Do I?' page to a carbon footprint calculator. It could be customized for Santa Barbara residents."
Very good. We're grateful for that comment. We'll close public comment. Well, are there any other remarks from the city council members? People were sort of complimenting you along with their questions, so I'm grateful too for this. The presentation, the artwork, it looks very engaging and thank you for all your hard work on it. Thanks, Ms. Winkler, Mr. Latchford. We will move on to the next item then, which is an update on the Santa Barbara County Resource Center. So we're just receiving a presentation. There's Ms. Ierly. Whenever you're ready, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and committee members. Today, I am joined with Dustin Murbach. He is one of our senior environmental specialists who oversees rate setting, system planning, and managing our agreement with the county for the Resource Center. And we are going to provide an update of where the system is today and the status of the Resource Center as it is in the final stages of construction. And then finally, just talk a little bit about the future system planning and drivers. And so with that, I will hand it over to Dustin. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Renee. Madam Chair and committee members, I'm Dustin Murbach, Senior Environmental Specialist. Let's begin with an overview of the city's solid waste system. The solid waste fund is $33 million, predominantly associated with the contracts necessary for the collection and disposal of the material our community generates. Our largest contract is with our hauler Marburg Industries, who is the main point of contact with the public and responsible for collecting and directing our four waste streams to their destination facilities. Currently, next slide, please. Currently, all trash disposed of at the Tahiquas landfill on the Gaviota coast with no sorting or processing. Recycling is primarily sent to Gold Coast in Ventura with a portion processed at Marburg's Galita recycling set. Green waste or yard trimmings are sent to Tahiquas for mulching. The mulch is then distributed locally with no further treatment. Our source separated organics or food scraps are initially sent to the Simi Valley landfill for sorting and are composted at Aggerman's Kern County facility. Next slide, please. The city of Santa Barbara has partnered with the county to build a new material reclamation facility, or MRF, at the Tahiquas landfill. It will improve our region's diversion by sorting recycling and organics from the trash, which would otherwise go directly into the landfill. The facility, called the Resource Center, is in the final stages of construction and will begin operations in 2021. Next slide, please. The city entered into a 20-year material delivery agreement with the county, guaranteeing 75,000 tons of material to the system each year. This assurance, along with commitments from other jurisdictions, enabled the county to finance a state-of-the-art facility that is designed to sort out 60% of what is currently landfilled trash and divert that material as useful recyclables and organics. In addition to more responsibly managing our waste, the facility extends the operational life of our landfill as we will only be disposing of 40% of our current rate. By delaying the need to site and construct a new regional landfill or begin shipping our waste to landfills in other regions, we mitigate those environmental and financial costs. Next slide, please. One of the features of the Resource Center, I'm sorry, you can go back one slide. One of the features of the Resource Center is an anaerobic digester, which takes organic material and rapidly decomposes it in a sealed, low-oxygen environment. This produces methane gas and a compostable digestate solid. Methane is ordinarily a potent greenhouse gas gradually produced after bearing organics in a landfill, which then escapes to the atmosphere. But in an anaerobic digester, the methane is immediately produced and captured. Once captured, it will be burned to produce electricity that powers the facility and contributes to the local power grid, reducing overall greenhouse gases annually by 117,000 metric tons, equivalent to taking 29,000 cars off the road. The solid digestate will then be composted for use as a soil amendment. The Resource Center is a major step towards taking local responsibility for our waste generation and greenhouse gas emissions and demonstrates a commitment to taking a long-term view of the city's environmental impacts. Next slide, please. In August, the county provided a report on the Resource Center's construction progress. Work began in 2018 with an intended completion date in early 2021. Due to a combination of rain preventing work and complications from the pandemic, construction has been delayed by a total of 150 days. As of August, the facility is estimated to be 77% complete. During this final stretch, the county will be commissioning the individual elements of the facility, testing them to ensure their correct operation and demonstrating their capacity. From September through November, they will be commissioning their upgraded landfill gas processing system, which collects methane produced by previously buried organics, serving to both prevent its release into the atmosphere and to make it useful for energy production. Between October and January, they will be testing the new material reclamation facility. Conventional MRFs rely on workers' hand-sorting material that comes across a conveyor belt. It is dirty, dangerous work that misses a lot of recyclables. The Resource Center will feature a largely automated process with technologically advanced equipment capable of sorting combined materials into separate trash, recycling, and organics, then further separate the recyclables into categories ready to be sold. From November through February, they will commission the anaerobic digester, ensuring that it is efficiently producing methane, which maximizes energy production and minimizes the mass of leftover digestate. Between January and March, they will take the solids left over from the anaerobic digestion and test composting them on-site, which will determine the quality of the resulting soil amendment and the potential markets and applications. The commissioning process is extremely important and it is essential to take the time needed to bring a system like this online properly. It is expected to encounter complications that need to be addressed when bringing a facility from concept to reality. Rushing to open such a complex project only guarantees that any issues encountered in the future will be harder to remedy. Therefore, it is important to approach this stage of construction patiently with careful oversight and appropriate contingency plans. Taking all of this into consideration, the county is projecting an operation start date of May 1st, 2021. Next slide, please. As we look at the new system beginning operations, recycling markets are a huge driver of our strategy and the decisions we make. Ultimately, recycling is only viable if someone is willing to use the material. Because recycling must compete with the regular commodity markets for metal, glass, paper, and so on, it also needs to be less expensive to use recycled material or manufacturers will choose to use virgin material for their products. Plastic is especially subject to the volatile market for oil. When crude oil prices are low, it becomes much less expensive to make new plastic than to recycle old plastic. In some cases, regulation can subsidize or incentivize the use of certain recycled materials, such as by instituting a redemption value or requiring a percentage of post-consumer material in a product. Nevertheless, demand for recycled material is determined by commodity prices and manufacturers reliably select the most cost-effective option. This is complicated by the recent upheaval in global recycling markets when China essentially blocked all recycling imports in 2017. Up until this point, a combination of inexpensive shipping, heavy demand from Chinese manufacturing, and lax environmental standards meant that there was a nearly inexhaustible capacity to send recyclables to China. And the entire recycling system was built on this assumption. When China decided to prioritize domestic recycling markets and enforce environmental standards for processing, suddenly cutting off both the demand and processing capacity from the global market, the value of recyclables plummeted. Now, recyclers are struggling to find alternative and domestic markets, facing both low material values and the need to invest in scaling up processing capacity. One consistent, reliable fact in these circumstances is that the quality of materials is key to finding a buyer. Previously, China would import extremely contaminated bales, in some cases up to 50% trash. So many MRFs were designed to optimize throughput rather than minimize contamination. Fortunately, Santa Barbara's program and processors already generated uncommonly clean loads, so we have been able to find buyers for our materials. Other jurisdictions throughout the country have not been able to market their recyclables and have resorted to landfilling them. Looking forward, we need to maintain the quality of our recycling and be prepared to adapt to changing market demands. Next slide, please. In addition to market factors, our strategy and decision-making is heavily influenced by the regulatory environment. California has several longstanding regulations that require diversion of materials from the landfill. But in recent years, the state has added more expansive and strict requirements and is signaling an increasing intent to dictate material management standards. The most immediately impactful state regulations are AB 341, which mandates participation in recycling programs for most commercial and multi-unit residential sites. AB 1826, which mandates participation in organics recycling for most commercial and multi-unit residential sites. And SB 1383, which reinforces the importance of AB 1826 and identifies landfill disposal of organics as a major source of the greenhouse gas methane. The state seeks to achieve climate pollutant reduction in part by mandating a 75% reduction in the disposal of organics by 2025. Furthermore, the regulation requires the recovery of 20% of the edible food that is currently wasted. None of these regulations come with individual penalties for non-compliance. Each jurisdiction is responsible for ensuring compliance. And if they are unable to achieve compliance through voluntary participation, they're expected to impose their own enforcement mechanisms through municipal code. Jurisdictions that are out of compliance face daily fines and increased regulatory demands and oversight. Looking forward, the state is extremely likely to become more involved in making top-down decisions about setting waste disposal goals. Our strategy and planning needs to be nimble and able to adapt to rapidly evolving regulatory demands. And with that, I'll hand it off to Renee. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Thank you, Dustin. So part of why we brought this presentation to you today in addition to updating on the status of this largest public infrastructure project in the history of the county forward. I mean, it sets the stage that there are a lot of elements that are needed to be watched and planned for as we go into the next 10 to 15 years of our solid waste system. We need to adapt to upcoming state regulations and accommodate the commodity markets changes, as Dustin outlined. Those are two areas that will have significant influence over what and how we deliver services to the community. This is also an opportunity to develop comprehensive and strategic local policies and plans to optimize this infrastructure and improve overall services to the community. We need to have a collection service that matches the needs of our community and complement the infrastructure that we're invested in at the Resource Center. We are, as a city, the largest contributor of both material and funding to the Resource Center. So what we do impacts them quite a bit. Additionally, we should establish our own local policy priorities to drive the system and our intended outcomes. So we'll be bringing this conversation forward to you over the next year or so, including how to objectively assess our system and engage with the stakeholders and the community on next steps. So we, as I said, we just wanted to set the stage and let you know that there's a lot more that's going to be coming forward and that we certainly need a lot of participation and conversation around what that's going to look like. Next slide, please. So with that, we would ask that the committee receive this presentation from staff regarding our partnership with the county on the Resource Center, and we'd be happy to take any questions from you that you might have.
Thanks, Ms. Ierly and Mr. Murbach. Ms. Sneddon, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm so glad you brought this and that we're reopening the conversation about what this means. I think some questions that I have, we hear that it's no use even putting things in the recycle bin anymore. And if you could give us more information on that or clarify that, because it sounds like from today that our MRF does separate it out to enough of a quality that there is a market for it. And I think right now the community believes that there isn't a market and that there is no point in recycling. So I think that would be a really important question to answer today and also to get the message out, well, I guess depending on what the answer is. And then for the markets for the digestate, there's been a lot of research or talk about using that in San Diego Valley and maybe as a carbon sink. And if we're in partnership or might be in partnership in the future with that digestate and what the specifications are for that, I guess those are two main questions I have right now. And just overarching, I think the community needs to know that this is still worth it, that the changes in the markets of the recycling, if you could maybe speak to that specifically. Thank you.
Sure, of course. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pretend Sneddon. Yes, I mean, obviously the market is much more complicated than it was than when we entered into this whole endeavor many years ago. There are still many materials that are quite readily recyclable and those tend to be our classic ones, right? So like paper slash cardboard, glass, and aluminum. What we have seen in particular, it's the single-use plastics that are the major problem. And it's difficult to find markets for them. It was difficult. And it's difficult to find markets for them. It was difficult to find markets for them in the past. We just didn't discuss that collectively as often. So with the shutdown of some of the Asian markets in particular and the lack of infrastructure in the country to be able to process those harder-to-recycle materials, we are right now treating those as trash. So again, that's only 1% to 2% of the overall material stream. So the vast majority of everything that is recyclable is still being recycled. The advantage of having invested in the Resource Center is because we're doing that sort of like what's called sort of like the back-of-house processing. So even if recyclables or organics are in the garbage waste stream, right, in the brown containers, they are still being run over a line and they're being sorted out. And so that's where we get that additional 60% of collection. And so it is a shifting of, in some ways, of how we're collecting that material. It also still allows us to be able to be flexible as that processing and markets change so that we're still collecting it. And I think as we're looking at the system going forward over the next several years is how to communicate to the community most clearly, right, about how to handle that material there at the curb and still at the same end, make sure that we're maximizing that collection overall. And with respect to your second question around the digestate, I would say that it continues to be an evolving conversation around how that is ultimately processed and its end use. I know that that's part of what the county is working on internally right now and with their other service providers about looking at those market opportunities for that material as we move forward. One of the important pieces around commissioning is that we'll be able to then do the testing on that material as well. So we'll have a much better sense then, once we've gone live, to be able to then both tailor our processing to get the best product that we can of the digestate and then also be able to speak more definitively to what market availability it is for the end product.
Thank you. So for now, people should still put everything in their regular recycling bins and let us sort it out once it gets there. Well, we're not fully operational yet with.
We are not. That's correct. Mayor Pretam Sneddon, we are not operationalized. Right now, the current processing that we have is what is happening. We are transitioning into testing the system over the next several months. We have, so we have encouraged our community to not worry about the small, single-use plastics. They can go in the trash because there is no value and it actually makes the processing easier so that for our current recycling process or Gold Coast. And so that is part of the education that we have been shifting with the public. But again, like the vast majority of what is recyclable should still go in the blue bins.
Okay. Thank you so much. And thank you for your mentioning it being nimble and adaptive. And we're going to make this work and make it benefit the community. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Questions from you, Ms. Harmon? Are you there?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Along the lines of where Ms. Sneddon was going, I'd like to hear more about promoting source reduction. We, that sounds like a positive place to start. And let us know if there's anything that the, you know, the council can do. What are your thoughts on that, Ms. Ierly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I completely agree. I think it is one of our strongest messages. It is to reduce overall amount of material that's coming into the system in the first place, particularly these hard-to-manage materials. And so we have been amplifying and expanding the education and encouragement of waste reduction generally. I think it's one of those important, also, policy discussions ultimately. Like when we're looking at a comprehensive system over the next several years, how much emphasis would the council like to place on those sorts of elements as opposed to having a system that is just handling the material at the end of the pipe, so to speak?
Right. And I think we can work with our state legislators too. I think the state has tried to address this in terms of manufacturing. And certainly, we can get on board with that. So, well, very good. I should ask if there's anyone attending this meeting webinar, if they'd like to speak their piece. Mr. Moen, anybody out there?
At the moment, there's not. I'm just checking questions one more time and checking once again to see if anyone's hand is raised. And I am not seeing anybody.
Okay. So we thank you then, Ms. Ierly and Mr. Murbach. Thanks so much. My very first city council meeting, so I was sworn in in January 2012, right? And this was on the agenda. The, gosh, they called it something else back then, but I remember studying it and biting my fingernails. It was one of the first topics that I got to address my very first day as a city council member so many years ago. So it's great to see it in this form. And as has been expressed, let's make it work. And so glad that we're in partnership with the county of Santa Barbara and everyone else that's working on this project. So thank you very much. We'll close this item. And if I'm reading my agenda correctly, we are at the end of our meeting. Mr. Moen, anything else for the good of the order? Or I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting of the city council's Sustainability Committee?
Nothing else at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Meeting, thank you to staff and meeting adjourned.